Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Henson?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Ms. Lawless?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
He's here.
Mr. Martin is here.
He's here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Stenit?
I am.
Mr. Beard?
Here.
Mr. Blues?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Feigl?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
And Mr. Gray?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we're ready to proceed. It's my pleasure to welcome to the podium Reverend Bob Sessom from Good Shepherd Episcopal Church to give our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. We pray, O God, tonight for all those in our community, those who will make presentations here tonight, those who have come with concerns and interest, and especially our council members and our mayor, who are responsible for our civic welfare, health, and security. May your Spirit guide our council members that they may have a care only for what will promote good government, and do all in position of responsibility give such a sense of duty that no self-interest shall turn them from it. Grant, O God, that caring members of this council may come to undertake the work of local government as a vocation and ministry. They may bring to their work brains that think, hearts that feel, and that they may have ideas, imagination, wisdom, and courage, but they may never be enslaved by routine and conventional and popular opinion, but ever be upheld by your free Spirit through the grace of your heavenly being. We commend to you, O Lord, Ed, Peggy, Doug, Jay, George, Casey, Kevin, Julian, Tom, Diane, Andrea, Chuck, Jim, and Jim. Give them wisdom and guidance to make those decisions tonight that are necessary for this community. Grant to them integrity of purpose and unfailing devotion to the cause of righteousness. May all their actions be as such as will promote our welfare, the succor of the poor, the relief of the oppressed, the putting down of all social evils, and the redress of all social wrongs, to the glory and the good example of your people, through your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. We have a set of minutes from the August 27 meeting. Councilmember Stenit has moved approval of those minutes. Councilmember Ellinger has seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, we're ready to give a second reading to the ordinances entitled a second reading.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance creating Section 5-29.3 of the Code of Ordinances, Lexington Fayetteville County Government to establish additional fees to be payable to the Director of the Division of Budgeting, uh, excuse me, the Division of Building Inspection for work commenced before the issuance of certain of the necessary permits, certificates, letters, or other documents required by Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances, with the amount of such fees established as being additional and equal to the amount of the original relevant fee, but not less than $500, for Sections 5-29, 1 through 9, 14, and 15. Section 5-29.1, Section 5-32, and Section 5-67 of the Code of Ordinances as being an additional and equal to the amount of the original relevant fee for Sections 5-29, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, and 17 of the Code of Ordinances, all effective on October 1, 2009. Number two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of $200 and $250 from Columbia Gas for future fire prevention programs and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 58. Number three, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $25,000 federal funds, are for additional funds for the ticketing aggressive cars and trucks program, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $6,250 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 59, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number four, an ordinance amending Section 22-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one temporary position of administrative specialist principal, Grade 114E, and five temporary positions of administrative specialist, Grade 110N, all ending one year from the date of passage of this ordinance within the Division of Water Quality and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 60. Number five, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $13,572 federal funds, are for a juvenile fire center program and the purchase of a fire extinguisher's trainers' package, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $3,393 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 61, and authorizing and directing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number six, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 62. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to change order number two to the contract with Wilbur Smith &amp; Associates for the Urban County Government Wayfinding Program to extend the existing contract for the completion of construction drawings at a cost not to exceed $140,742.52, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 64. Number eight, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of $875 from neighborhood development funds in the Division of Police for Police Activities League, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 65. Number nine, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of $390 in the Division of Traffic Engineering from the council capital funds for culvert signage to be installed by the Division of Water Quality in the 11th Council District, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 67. Number 10, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010, on the assessed value of all taxable property within the taxing jurisdictions of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government, all taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2009 assessment date, as follows: General Services District .0800 on real property, including real property of public service companies; .0990 on personal property, including personal property of public service companies; non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft; .1500 on insurance capital; .0150 on tobacco and storage; and .0450 on agricultural products and storage. Full urban or partial urban service districts based upon urban services available on real property, including real property of public service companies; .1431 for refuse collection; .0210 for street clean, streetlights; .0094 for street cleaning; .0920 on insurance capital; .0150 on tobacco and storage; .0450 on agricultural products and storage; and levying an ad valorem tax for municipal purposes at the rate of .0880 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government as of the January 1, 2010 assessment date. Number 11, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for purposes of support of the Soil and Water Conservation District for the fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010, on the assessed value of all taxable real property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government, including real property of public service companies, at the rate of .0004 on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2009 assessment date. Number 12, an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office for the fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government, all taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2009 assessment date, as follows: .0032 on all taxable real property, including real property of public service companies; .0035 on taxable personal property, including personal property of public service companies; non-commercial aircraft and non-commercial watercraft; and excluding inventory in transit; insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage; and levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of the support of the Agricultural Extension Office at the rate of .0032 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government as of January 1, 2010 assessment date. Number 13, an ordinance pursuant to a request received from the Lexington Fayetteville County Health Department levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayetteville County Health Department for the fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government, including real and personal property of public service companies; noncommercial aircraft, noncommercial watercraft, and inventory in transit; and excluding insurance, capital, tobacco, and storage, and agricultural products and storage, at the rate of .028 on each $100 of assessed values as of the January 1, 2009 assessment date; and levying an ad valorem tax for purposes of support of the Lexington Fayetteville County Health Department at a rate of .028 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government as of the January 1, 2010 assessment date.
Thank you. That concludes the reading of the ordinances entitled a second reading. Is there a motion to approve those ordinances? Councilmember Martin has moved their approval. Councilmember Henson has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving those ordinances, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
I'm going to do no on 10 and yes on the rest.
Your vote will be reflected. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Um, I'd like to explain my vote. I'm going to, uh, because of the reduction-
Madam, excuse me, Councilmember Lawless, it's not in order to explain your vote under the council rules. Sorry.
Okay, Mayor, thanks. No on 10 and yes on the rest.
Your vote will be reflected. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
No on 1, yes on the rest.
Your vote will be reflected. Mr. Myers?
Yes on 10 and yes on the rest.
Thank you. Mr. Stenit? Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby? Did she step out? Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
And Mr.?
Ms. Crosby has arrived.
Yes. Okay. And Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinances entitled a first reading.
Ordinance number 14, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures related to FY 2009 year-end expenses and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule, uh, FY 2009, Schedule Number 166. Number 15, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayetteville County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 63. Number 16, an ordinance amending Section 5-29 of the Code of Ordinances of the Lexington Fayetteville Urban County Government to provide for the Director of the Division of Building Inspection to receive fees for the-
Count, excuse me, Councilmember Lawless.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure the tree fee is still inclu, we put that in there? The $100 tree, street tree fee?
That's not reflected on the docket.
I think that's actually forthcoming at another meeting, but I, I think your concern was with, with having an ordinance amended to make sure we left a fee in. That's not this particular ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burberry. Excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 16, an ordinance amending Section 5-29 of the Code of Ordinances of the Lexington Fayetteville Urban County Government to provide for the Division, Director of the Division of Building Inspection to receive fees for the issuance of a required certificate, letter, or other documentation, deleting the $25 fee for a grading permit and establishing a $25 fee for a certificate of occupancy, a $10 fee for a home office certificate, a $25 fee for a zoning and use verification letter, and a $25 minimum fee for a residential paving permit, and renumbering all of the subsections of this section accordingly. Amending Sections 5-29.3 of the Code of Ordinances to renumber all of the subsections to correspond to the deletion of the grading permit, all effective on January 1, 2010. Number 17, an ordinance amending Section 21-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of code enforcement officer, Grade 113N, and creating one position of nuisance control officer, Grade 111N, in the Division of Code Enforcement, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 66. Number 18, an ordinance amending Section 22-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one temporary position of social worker, Grade 111E, and with three-year term within the Division of Community Corrections. Number 19, an ordinance amending Section 22-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one temporary position of microcomputer support specialist, Grade 113N, with a one-year term within the Division of Police. Number 20, an ordinance amending Section 21-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one position of environmental initiatives specialist, Grade 115E, in the Division of Environmental Policy. Number 21, a resol, an ordinance, excuse me, amending Section 21-5, 2 of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of administrative officer, Grade 118E, and creating one position of efficiency analyst, Grade 118E, in the Division of Waste Management. 22, an ordinance accepting the private street, Forest Springs Court, as a public street pursuant to the private street acceptance policy contingent upon the Banbury Homeowners' Association satisfaction, satisfactory completing the resurfacing of all pavement with one and a half inch overlay, accepting responsibility for all non-street common areas and structures, including the street lights, concrete or media, grass medians, and any street pavers, fencing, and landscaping bearing the cost of new or replacement street signs, and recording a final recorplat within one year of passage of this ordinance, dedicating the street as a public right-of-way, and a note assigning maintenance of common areas outside the public right-of-way to the Homeowners' Association.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there are no motions, we'll proceed to the reading of resolutions-
Mayor, if I could correct my previous statement on number 16, Councilmember Lawless is correct. The council made a motion to take part of that out, and that, in fact, it happened on number 16, just so there's no confusion on the-
Thank, thank you for the clarification. Seeing nothing further, let's proceed to the reading of resolutions entitled a second reading.
Resolution number one, a resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Contracting Corporation in the amount of $1,225,006, $1,225,006.25 for the Vons Branch Flood Hazard Mitigation Project for the Divisions of Community Development and Engineering, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Bluegrass Contracting Corporation related to the bid. Number two, a resolution accepting the bid of Allen Vanguard Technologies Incorporated establishing a price contract for ballistic ensemble for the Division of Police. Number three, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Susan Pluger, Municipal Engineer Senior, Grade 119E, 2007, 71, 60, biweekly, and the Division of Water Quality, effective September 14, 2009, Jennifer Bass, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade 113N, 17.131 hourly, and the Division of Emergency Management, 911, effective September 14, 2009, Collette Ledoux, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade 113N, 17.206 hourly, and the Division of Emergency Management, 911, effective September 14, 2009. Number four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Veterans Affairs for emergency responses at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an additional software license agreement with New World Systems Corporation for use of software at a cost not to exceed $58,560. Number six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a modification of an agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for operations and maintenance of traffic signals through June 30, 2010, at no cost, at a cost not to exceed $300,000. Number seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Emergency Management Agency, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $108,750 federal funds and $17,400 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, and are for the Lexington Fayetteville County Comprehensive Hazard Mitigation Plan. Number eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Reach Incorporated for an additional $100,000 for the First Time Home Buyers Program at a cost not to exceed an additional $100,000. And number nine, an ordinance, excuse me, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Metropolitan Women's Club Incorporated, $450 for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to accept, exceed the sum stated. I believe that's all the first, uh, second readings.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lawless to approve those resolutions. Councilmember McCord has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James? Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl? And Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crosby, do you wish to vote on those resolutions? Yes. Thank you. Those resolutions are unanimously approved. That takes us down to the resolutions entitled to first reading. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 10, a resolution accepting the bid of Smith Services Incorporated establishing a price contract for switchgear maintenance for the Division of Water Quality. Number 11, a resolution accepting the bid of Straw Cer Construction Incorporated in the amount of $110,160 for asphalt emulsion slurry seal for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 12, a resolution accepting the bid of Pavement Technology Incorporated in the amount of $165,000 for asphalt surface maintenance with the asphalt rejuvenating agent for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 13, a resolution accepting the bid of CNR Asphalt LLC in the amount of $93,000 for the 2009 crack sealing project for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 14, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Crystal Clay, Administrative Specialist Senior, Grade 112N, 21.583 hourly, in the Division of Environmental Policy, effective September 21, 2009, James Shid, Barodin, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, Grade 123E, $3,960 biweekly, in the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management, effective August 31, 2009, Mario Cheek, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade 113N, 16.660 hourly, in the Division of Emergency Management, 911, effective September 28, 2009, Jason Million, Maintenance Mechanic, Grade 113N, 16.660 hourly, in the Division of Water Quality, effective September 28, 2009, Joyce Thomas, Administrative Officer Senior, Grade 120E, $3,019.92 biweekly, in the Department of General Services, effective October 19, 2009, ratifying the probationary Community Corrections Officer Appointments of Justin Otten, Carol, Carl Bush, Joe Clark, Jamie Conover, Tabitha Davidson, Richard Franz, Toby Hayden, Steve Hess, Michael Hill Jr., Douglas Holloway, James Holloway, Brandon Horseman, Eli Johnston, Benny Johns Jr., Jabari Jones, James Keel, Dennis Lewiski, Jennifer Maxwell, Kristy McCoy, Kirsten Mitchell, Thomas Niehaus, Sam Norris, Michael Tulson, Ronald Willis, Virginia Cox, Ronald Noonmaker, William Rarick, William Smedley, Jared Stumpf, Ryan Oler, Chelsea Woodroom, Community Corrections Officer, Grade 110N, 14.34O hourly, in the Division of Community Corrections, effective September 28, 2009. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Linda Rumke, Commissioner of Finance and Administration, Grade 211E, $4,807.70 biweekly, in the Department of Finance and Administration, effective October 15, 2009. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment to the Office of the Urban County Council of Robert Clue, Aid to Council, Grade 000E, 203840 biweekly, in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective August 31, 2009. Number 15, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract with Kentucky Utilities for Kentucky Utilities Company for outdoor lighting service at a cost not to exceed $2,603.04. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number two of the contract with Denham Life Company Incorporated for the Lyric Theater Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $72,838.01 from $5,576,635.78 to $5,649,473.79. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Friends of Lexington Mounted Police Incorporated of Conference Registration and Lodging for Use at the 2009 American, North American Police Equestrian Championship at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a location parking agreement with Fast Track Productions Incorporated for parking at the LFCG Training Pad for the sum of $1,500. Number 19, a resolution amending Resolution Number 440, 2009, which accepted and adopted the financial audit report prepared by Blue &amp; Company LLC for the audit of the Family Care Center Health Clinic to correct the period of time covered by the audit. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute certificates of consideration and other necessary documents to accept deeds for easements needed for the Legacy Shared Use Trail at no cost to the Urban County Government. 21, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the FET County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for a fast-track prosecutor for the street sales enforcement project at a cost not to exceed $51,664. Number 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $2,000, $16,048.75 federal funds, and $322,567.80 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, and are for the acquisition and demolition of 14 residential properties in the Lafayette Parkway, South Bend, and Lone Oak area. 23, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Chrisless House, $950, North Limestone Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $1,000, and Joyland Neighborhood Association, $550 for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. 24, a resolution authorizing the Division of Human Resources to internally advertise for an administrative specialist senior in the Division of Building Inspection. 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the, the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Simon &amp; Company Incorporated for services related to federal matters and funding as provided in the 2009-10 work plan, at a cost not to exceed $39,000. 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the FET County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for employment of a full-time assistant prosecutor for the prosecution of major violations, violators, at a cost not to exceed $135,000 in recovery Act Justice Assistance Grant Program Funds. 27, a resolution, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an eternal revenue service sponsor agreement and civil rights assurance, which are attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference for volunteer income tax assistance programs at the Gainesway Empowerment Center, the Central Kentucky Job Center, and the Family Care Center, at no cost to the Urban County Government. 28, a resident, a resolution initiating a zoning ordinance text amendment for planning commission consideration and recommendation to amend Article 17-6 of the zoning ordinance to allow for limited temporary signs in the rights and way of residential neighborhoods. 29, a resolution amending Section 2 of Resolution Number 284, 2009, which authorized and directed the mayor to execute certificate substance consideration and other necessary documents for property interest needed for the sugar mill mitigation project at a cost not to exceed $411,520, to increase the cost by $4,000, for a total of $415,520. Number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a renewal to the annual program management services agreement with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the continued performance of services related to the EPA consent decree, and authorizing initial payment of funds in an amount not to exceed $1,440,000, and any further payments pursuant to the terms of the agreement. Number 31, a resolution specifying the, resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend the full Urban Services District, number one, to provide street lighting, street cleaning, and garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for these services in the area, included finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in the area, which area is defined as certain properties on the following streets: Milliken, Property Shady Hills, Tree Line Way, Tuscany, Unit 4A, Summerfield Meeting Street, Patch and Wilkes Drive, Tuscany, Unit 4B, Summerfield, Sandhurst Cove, Battery Street, Patch and Wilkes Drive, Tuscany, Unit 4C, Summerfield, Battery Street, Mahon, Property Lot 1, Man Coin, Moon Coin Way, Tuscany, Unit 4E, Summerfield, Patch and Wilkes Drive, Newtown Springs LLC, Unit 1, Section 2, Newtown Center Way, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Section 5, Beaumont Center Circle, Midnight Pass, Sharkey Property, Unit 4, Section 1, Louis Place, Will &amp; Baker Property, Russell Cave Road, Richardson Property- Property, Russell Cave Road, Richardson Property, Unit 5, Section 2, Hannah Todd Place, Blue Crass, Asmedale, Phase 3, Ray Street, Fourth Street, Cunningham Lane, Julia Way, Shropshire Avenue, Fifth Street, Nelson Avenue, Mustang Crossing Drive, Lockhamere Estates, Maple Ridge, Unit 1B, Section 1, Lockhamere Place, Guest Property, Unit 5C, Section 2, Honeycomb Trail, Guest Property, Unit 5D, Section 2, Marlberry Place, Guest Property, Unit 5E, Section 2, Maiden Kane Drive, New Market, Unit 4B, Brick House Lane, Mahon, Property Unit 1B, Manor War Boulevard, Spencer Park, Parker Meadows, Madison Point Drive, Mahon, Property Unit 1C, Parker Meadows, Victoria Way, Madison Point Drive, Brindell Hills, Unit 3, Marluna Drive, Crescendo Road, CLO Vista Road, Guest Property, Unit 11A, Lark Hill Lane, Marcus Trail, Bull Rush Trace, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3, Phase 2, Silver Bell Trace, Kelly Rose Way, Tuscany, Unit 4F, Summerfield, Sandhurst Cove, Calumet Terrace, Subdivision Lot 8 and 9, Valley Road, Blackford Property, Phase 3, Unit 1A, Section 2, Blackford Parkway, Blackford Property, Phase 3, Unit 1B, Section 2, Cornelius Trace, Blackford Parkway. And 32, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend partial urban services District Number 3 to provide garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for this service in the area included, finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide this service in this area, which area is defined as certain properties on the following streets. Sharkey Property, Unit 3, Section 2, Town Square Park, Meadow Oaks, Ashford Oaks, Unit 1B, Section 1, Bob White Tail Trail, Marshall Property, Unit 2I, Section 1, McConnell's Trace, Bruce Properties, Corinthian Court, Lockhamere Estates, Maple Ridge, Unit 1B, Section 2, Lockhamere Place, Denton Farms Incorporated, Unit 3, Section A, Summersley Place, Wentworth Place, Sunny Slope Farm, Town Homes, Silver Bell Trace, Lockhamere Estates, Maple Ridge, Unit 1A, Lockhamere Place, Marshall Property, Unit 2I, Section 2, McConnell's Trace, Hamburg Place Farm, Sir Barton Way.
Thank you. Councilmember Henson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion pursuant to Council Rule 4407. I move to reconsider the Urban County Council's action at the work session on September 15, 2009, to reject placement on the docket for the September 17, 2009 council meeting, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Lexington Fed Urban County Government of a settlement agreement and of any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2009-00141 pertaining to the rates of the Columbia Gas of Kentucky Incorporated. So moved.
I have a motion and second to reconsider the motion that rejected the placement on the docket of the resolution dealing with the Columbia Gas case. Any discussion on that motion? Excuse me for just a moment. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of reconsidering the motion pertaining to the Columbia Gas case, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. That now brings back to the floor the motion to place on the docket the resolution authorizing the Department of Law to execute the settlement documents. So moved. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Who made the motion?
Councilmember Martin made the motion. Councilmember Lane seconded it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you give first reading to that motion?
Resolution number 33, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of a stipulation and recommendation settlement agreement and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2009-00141 pertaining to the rates of Columbia Gas of Kentucky Incorporated.
Thank you. Are there any motions pertaining to those resolutions? Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to suspend the rules in order to give second reading to number 18. There is a time element here, and we need to get this agreement consummated. So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Blues to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to number 18 and a second by Councilmember Beard. Are there others? Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give second reading to number 27. And this is, I believe, the free tax service that's going to take place in the Gainesway Building, among other places, and they need to get on board the IRS early so we can get it all lined out. So moved.
I think we'll entertain that as an amendment to the original resolution. A motion to suspend the rules. Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a couple to consider for second reading. Number 16, which is the lyric change order. They're waiting for approval of this in order to continue work. We need to move forward with that. And also, number 20, related to the legacy trail.
Thank you. Councilmember Henson?
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to suspend the rules and give second reading to item number 33, please.
Second. Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
I make a motion to suspend the rules for Resolution Number 26. These are funds from the ARA Recovery Act Fund.
Second. Any others? All right, then I have a motion as now amended to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to the following items, numbers 16, 18, 20, 26, 27, and 33 under resolutions receiving first reading. Those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Number 16, a resolution for second reading, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number two to the contract with Denham Life Company Incorporated for the Lyric Theater Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $72,838.01 from $5,576,635.78 to $5,649,473.79. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a location parking agreement with Fast Track Productions Incorporated for parking at the LFUCG Training Pad for the sum of $1,500. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute certificates of consideration and other necessary documents and to accept deeds for easements needed for the legacy shared use trail at no cost to the Urban County Government. 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the FET County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for employment of a full-time assistant prosecutor for the prosecution of major violators at a cost not to exceed $135,000 in recovery Act Justice Assistance Grant Program Funds. 27, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an Internal Revenue Service Sponsor Agreement and Civil Rights Assurance, which are attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference for volunteer home income tax assistance programs at the Gainesway Empowerment Center, at the Central Kentucky Job Center, and the Family Care Center at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number 33, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of a stipulation and recommendation settlement agreement and any other necessary settlement documents in the Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2009-00141 pertaining to the rates of Columbia Gas of Kentucky Incorporated.
Is there a motion to approve those resolutions?
Second.
Councilmember Crosby has moved to approve those resolutions. Councilmember Myers has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Councilmember Beard?
Thank you, Mayor. Not anticipating that we're going to have to do two readings on the number 16, I'd like to ask Shay a question, if I might.
Believe Charlie?
Oh, Charlie here? Okay.
Howard may have more firsthand information about it.
Yes, sir.
You know, this is the second change order we've seen now in two weeks. It seemed like, from the description at work session, this was something that could have been discovered early on in the bidding process. Maybe you could explain a little bit about?
There was no way to discover it. It was a hidden condition. In order to have discovered it, they would have had to take some of the glazed tile off of the wall. That's where the problem was, behind that glazed tile. If it had been discovered then, it would have been just about the same cost because it would have been designed into it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, one other thing is, it mentioned that the funds were budgeted.
Yes.
Is that the $6 million figure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's still a lot of room left here. There's another $350,000 worth of room.
There is a contingency fund in the budget also that is covering that amount.
Because there was some equipment, I think, that was wanting to be added to. Was that not correct? Equipment, some equipment in that number, too? Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Anything further? Then we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James? Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
And Mr. Gray? Thank you.
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved. That takes us down to communications from the mayor. A motion to approve those recommended appointments would be in order.
Sir.
I have a motion by Councilmember Crosby, seconded by Councilmember Lane to approve those recommendations. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Chief Hendricks, we have a few disciplinary matters I understand we need to take up this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring to you the matter of disciplinary matter concerning Captain Greg Gillum, employee number 24855, who was charged with the offense of malicious behavior or deliberate behavior affecting the efficient and effective performance of the job. He was going to be a little more lengthy than usual because Captain Gillum has refused to sign his concurrence with the discipline, so I'll try to be brief and explain the process. In violation of the Urban County Government Employee Handbook, Lexington Fire Department Policies and Procedures, he allegedly made unprofessional statements regarding another employee that did not maintain a professional level of behavior for his work unit. It was investigated by the Division, referred to the Disciplinary Review Board, and discipline was issued in a written reprimand. Captain Gillum grieved that discipline. It was furthered by his union to Michael Allen and Human Resources per the contract, where it was upheld by Human Resources. The discipline was upheld. The union then agreed and did not advance the cause on to an arbitrator. So they, at that point, agreed with our discipline. It then returned to the employee. The employee refused to sign, and again, per contract, his two immediate supervisors signed to document his refusal. And I'm here to present the discipline as originally issued, that of a written reprimand.
Any questions, Councilmember Ellinger? And then it's Councilmember Myers?
Is it my understanding, though, he did not agree to sign it still? Or has he agreed to sign that?
That's correct. He has not agreed to sign it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Myers? Okay. All right. Any other questions for Chief Hendricks? Floor is open for motion to approve the recommended discipline. I have a motion by Councilmember Crosby, seconded by Councilmember Beard to approve the discipline. Any discussion? Those in favor, then, please vote aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Chief?
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, we're down to announcements.
Mayor, I believe there are two police?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Commander Mike Blanton with the Division of Police here to present two agreements of conformity. The first one is in reference to Officer John J. Boyle, employee number 44364. This agreement of conformity is for violation of General Order 73-2H, Section 1.02 misconduct in reference to an incident that occurred on May 21 of this year. The agreed-upon disciplinary action in this agreement of conformity is 80-hour suspension without pay and mandatory participation in employee assistance program.
I have a motion by Councilmember McCord and a second by Councilmember Crosby to approve the recommended discipline. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Commander?
The second one, Mayor, is in reference to Officer Adrian J. Richardson, employee number 44004. This agreement of conformity is in reference to violation of General Order 73-2H, Section 1.02 misconduct in reference to an incident occurring on May 21 of this year. In this agreement of conformity, the agreed-upon disciplinary action was written reprimand.
Was that Councilmember McCord again? Made the motion. Councilmember Crosby seconded it. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the recommended discipline, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. That takes us down to announcements. Does any member of the council have any announcements? Councilmember Lawless?
Thank you. I want to let folks know that the Student Housing Task Force Report, which can be found on the LFUCG website, is going to be presented and discussed on Tuesday at 1:00 in council chambers by the Planning Committee. The entire two hours is devoted to that topic. I also would like to explain that there were an array of ideas and suggestions, and none of them are set in stone. We're looking at all of them, so just be aware if you would like to come and participate in that. Also, I wanted to let folks know that the Affordable Housing Task Force Group, Vice Mayor Gray and Councilmember Ellinger were pulling that together, and we'll start meeting soon. And appreciate the energy for that and the support for that. And I also would like to, I was pretty concerned about reading in the paper about the Airport Board negotiating a settlement with Mr. Gob on what he would owe and how that might impact ongoing investigations. And I was wondering if we could get them to come to a meeting next week and report.
I'll be glad to extend the invitation.
Thank you. And don't forget the gallery hop this Friday night. Thank you.
Mr. Green, if you'd follow up with Mr. Owen. Mr. Green, if you'd follow up with Mr. Owens at the airport, I would appreciate it. And on the gallery hop note, while you mentioned it, I want to encourage everybody on the council to come to the 12th floor either this evening or tomorrow morning or anytime tomorrow. We have traditionally had a rotating exhibit from the Lexington Art League. This particular time, the exhibit is a series of absolutely spectacular photographs that you will absolutely want to see by Doug Prather, one of Lexington's best-known equine photographers. They are incredible. And they were just put up this afternoon, and they are breathtaking. I'll extend the same invitation to those in the public. If you'd like to come by tonight to take an early look, we'd be glad to have you. Otherwise, tomorrow night, beginning at 5:30, with gallery hop, we'll be opening the doors of the 12th floor, and we'll be glad to have members of the public there. Any other announcements? Then we're ready for the public comment section. Pardon me. I'm sorry. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a real quick announcement. This coming Sunday, September 20th, at 3:00 p.m., join the YMCA of Central Kentucky and its partnering agencies, the America On The Move 2,000 Steps One Mile Walk kickoff event at the Beaumont Center YMCA. Register online at YMCAofcentralkentucky.org or at any YMCA Central Kentucky branch. And the events will involve family events for the whole family, and they'll be from 3:00 to 5:00. And please enjoy. It's a great event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I also noticed Councilmember Feigl has indicated this.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to announce that on September 24th at 5:00, I will be hosting a group of neighborhood leaders at Buddy's to talk about the possibility of a redesign of the Fontaine, Euclid, Tates Creek High Street interchange, intersection. And so I would just like to invite all neighborhood associations' leaders who are affected by that intersection. Also, I think that same evening, isn't the mayor's not at a neighborhood meeting about swine flu that night as well? And that's at 6:30?
Yes.
And where's that going to be held?
That will be here in the council chambers.
And that's for all neighborhood associations?
It is, as well as for members of the public that might wish to attend. I noticed that Dr. Rowe from the Health Department is here with us tonight. She will be providing a good bit of the information, she and the members of the Health Department staff. So we will welcome all neighborhood association representatives, as well as the public at large. And I believe our intention is to air that on GTV3 so that the rest of the public who may be interested in update on the H1N1 virus can follow as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? We have three individuals who've indicated a desire to comment this evening. The first is Adam Jones. Mr. Jones, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam Jones, 909 Somerville Drive, or I think I remember we're supposed to give our address. I am speaking to you on behalf of Build, and I just wanted to say in July, we had a large contingent here of approximately 70 folks talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Task Force that Councilwoman Lawless just spoke of, and the possibility of putting together that task force for exploring funding for a $3 to $5 million affordable housing trust fund. And we are pleased to hear that update. I wanted to ask if there is a timeline for when that task force will be official and will be together, if there's a date by which the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Task Force is going to be assembled and begin work. We had understood that the task force was going to be assembled a little while back and already moving, and that's why we were just asking if there was a timeline.
Yes, there is a timeline, and I think there was a miscommunication because council was on break.
Okay.
We had to wait till after that, but I've spoken to several people, and hopefully the first meeting will be in the next three to four weeks.
So in the next three to four weeks?
Yes.
Look for a meeting on the task force?
Yes, I hope so, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next is Mr. McCarthy.
Your Honor and members of the council, it seems that lately traffic inside of downtown and immediately south of it has gotten far worse than ever. Now, I could blame the closure of Limestone and the closure of Maxwell for difficulty coming north or going east, but the funny thing is, traffic seems to be paralyzed and not moving at all, even going south on streets like Broadway, worse than it has been in the past. I think that we desperately need more road capacity within downtown and immediately south of downtown. And the most recent 2035 Long Range Plan is way too watered down. I understand the restriction that it has to be what's called fiscally constrained. That means you guys need to come up with some local source of revenue to make up for what you can't extract from higher levels of government. And my suggestion would be that you add a road impact fee onto every building permit issued in this county, or at least any that increase density of land use over and above what was there before. If somebody tears down a single-family house and puts up a duplex, you charge them an impact fee on one of the units, for instance. And this should go towards projects that accommodate the increase in population. And then that would let you steer state and federal money toward doing a few more projects to fix places that are already a problem. We not only need to hurry up and finish all of Newtown Extension, whereas only one small piece is underway at the moment, but we also really desperately need to have Broadway widened from Newtown Extension out to Clay's Mill. We need to have Nicholasville Road widened from Southland Drive on in to the Limestone Upper Split. And, much as this is going to earn me enemies among various neighborhood associations, that piece of Tates Creek and Chevy Chase that your predecessors refused to widen back about 30 years ago or more, it needs to be widened, too. Actually, more than the part that was voted down back then needs to be widened. Merely widening from Lakewood to Euclid's not enough. It needs to be widened all the way into where High and Maxwell split.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Our last speaker this evening is Mr. Oshewski.
Howdy. Steve Oshewski, and you guys know my address by now maybe is 220 Westwood Court. I want to say, Westwood Court, as the name implies, is a wooded area, or it was at the beginning of the summer. It's a street off of, it's a court that runs up, you know, dead end to the railroads there, and it runs parallel to Floral Park and Forest Park, as the names would imply, wooded areas, at least at the beginning of the summer. And when I bought the property I'm living in now, I thought, one day I'll be old enough and, you know, retired enough to enjoy a quiet, isolated, peaceful life down a nice little lane like that. Since I moved there, and as I mentioned previously, I was forced off of University Avenue, a house I lived in, I was living in there, just because I couldn't take the anxiety of the fires, quite frankly. About once a month, a piece of furniture burning in the road, and at least once a week, fires going on in yards and on driveways around my house. It's just driving me crazy. Since I moved to Westwood Court, I have not one time driven to my house or from my house, from Elizabeth Street to my house at the end of the road there. Not one time have I driven down there that I haven't had to stop and adjust for another car going the opposite direction. Traffic has really, really increased. The way the cars are parked up there, only one car can go at a time. Today, I woke up to see two construction vehicles vying for parking right outside my door, and I thought, oh, what's going on? And as I was leaving this afternoon, I had to stop, and I thought, maybe today I'll get out of the, maybe today I'll drive up to Elizabeth Street and not have to contend with the increased traffic. And I had to stop, this is H&amp;H Paving, by the way. I mean, it's a reputable company. I'm not saying anything wrong, just, you know, they're doing their job. Had to stop for this big truck and stop and get out of the way. And this truck was full, even a little bit spilling over, asphalt. And I thought, where's all that asphalt going? And so I gave some brief pause and saw where it was going. Oh, another yard and another set of trees being replaced by sheer pavement. And I guess, you know, it's 50 by 150-foot lot. I mean, you know, it's not like it's, yeah. Am I making my point clear? This is an ongoing problem. It's been going on for about 20 years. It's at a critical time. That is, we're not in the mood to wait, I hope. I mean, I'm out of time, but I can give you a preview of what you're going to have to do. I got five or six suggestions, but, I mean, I'm just letting you know. The time is now. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, and comment would not be in order at this time. In any event, those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.